I'd like to call this Dixon County Planning Commission Meeting Order, November 18th, 2021. I want to remind everybody in the crowd, this is a public meeting, but it is not a public hearing. To, we cannot tolerate any outbursts from the crowd, or waving of signs, anything to distract. I'd appreciate if we keep that down. I think a lot of people here is probably here, how many people is here for the proposed changes on subdivision rigs? What I'd like to ask is, I can't let everybody, like I say, it's not really even a public hearing. I'd like for people that's for it, and people that's against it, pick three people, and I'll give three minutes each to speak when the time comes. So if you all would like to go out in the hall and discuss what wants to be discussed, that'll be at the tail end of everything we've got going. If I need to take a small recess and let y'all do that, I'll be glad to. What would you all like to do?
That's what I was going to suggest, after we finish the regular business, before we get to other business, maybe take a brief recess and let folks do their congregating, and, you know, give them, I think five minutes is good.
Sure.
Okay. We'll move into the devotion. Mr. Woodrow, would you give devotion, please, sir?
Everyone would pl- gentlemen, remove your hats, please. Everyone would please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity to meet here tonight and conduct the business of our county. We ask you to grant each one of us a strength, and wisdom, and courage to make good decisions here tonight. We ask you to watch over each one of us, guide us, keep us safe and in your love. Most of all, we thank you for Jesus, for it's in his precious holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to welcome our new member, Darren Green, from the 3rd District. And as a member comes on, we have a member that will be leaving us after tonight, Mr. Harold Williams. So, served us, how many years did you, you've been here? Okay, at this time, I get Mr. Darnell to call roll, please.
I will say, this will be on the county YouTube channel, but since they've been doing construction up here, part of the lights on both TVs now, they've got them both cut off. But it will be available on the YouTube channel.
And when we go into the items, please turn your mics on, so it will be heard clearly on the sound.
Todd Berry.
Here.
Robert Woodrow.
Here.
Darren Green.
Here.
Mac Pilkington.
Here.
Robert Qualls.
Here.
David Brogdon.
Here.
Harold Williams.
Here.
Shane Chandler.
Here.
Gary Peeler.
Here.
Kristy Sullivan.
Here.
Beth Garrett.
Here.
Robert Comer.
Here.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to take time to recognize all the visitors in the crowd, and ask you if you did not sign in, please do so before you leave tonight. And I appreciate everybody showing up, I wish it was this way every month. We'll now move into the approval, or we'll move into the minutes. Everybody had time to look over their previous minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Have a motion by Robert Woodrow to approve the minutes as they stand.
Now, there is a, there is a question I've got about the thing that talks about the previous, something we approved, whether there's an inconsistency, whether we did it in the year 2007 or the year 2017, regarding the, thought I had it circled in my minutes, but, it's the one where we're looking at.
It would be 2017, on the variance?
Yeah.
It's 2017.
Okay, can we, just want to make sure that in each instance, it says 2017, and that 2007 be the lead. And other than that, I think they're good minutes. So I'll say.
You good, Mr. Woodrow, with the correction? Have a motion to approve with the corrections and a proper second? All those in favor state "I". Approved. We'll now move into the items. Item number one is amended final plat for lots nine and 10 of Deer Creek subdivision. That'll be tax map 146, parcels 33.04 and 33.05, 10.26 acres, Jordan Cemetery Road, Bonnacwa, Tennessee, A1 agriculture, 6th District.
Okay, this was surveyed by Kevin Edinson to adjust the property lines of lots nine and 10 of the Deer Creek subdivision, which is located on Jordan Cemetery Road. This subdivision was originally approved and recorded in May of 1997. Lot nine will change from 4.93 acres to 5.26, and lot 10 will change from 5.34 to exactly 5 acres. Mr. Collins?
Right, as far as the amended plat is concerned, I compared the amended plat to the recorded plat from 97, and there were two, there's two things of note that I wanted to bring to your attention. One, the Turnbull Water Utility is now Water Authority of Dixon County. That would be one recommended change that I would suggest to this amended plat. The other is just identifying where all the existing hydrants are. On the 1997 plat, it does indicate as many as three hydrants were proposed for installation along these lots. As far as I know, just one has been installed, one hydrant, that's down at the end of lot 14. But nonetheless, that was a, just, that would be, I guess, the other contention item to add to this for accuracy of this amended plat.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
I'm going to move to approve with the recommended changes from staff.
Have a motion to approve by David Brogdon with staff comments.
I second.
Have a second by Kristy Sullivan. Any further discussion? All those in favor state "I".
"Aye".
Opposed? Okay, it passes. Item number two is the final plat for TD Equestrian Acres subdivision, tax map 131, part of parcel 5.14, 17.12 acres, Spencer Mill Road, A1 agriculture, 12th District.
Okay, this was surveyed by Kristy, surveying to create 13 new lots. This is in the jurisdiction of the Water Authority. They have a six-inch water main running down the length of development on Spencer Mill Road. And as you see there, you've got an email copy from Michael Rogers, no problem providing the water. We've got an updated email that the fire hydrants, the sureties form have been paid. Mr. Collins?
All right, I think really that was the only comment that I saw that was remained to be addressed, and of course, just all the necessary signatures.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Chair, this final map is consistent with the preliminary map that we reviewed previously, and I think it's consistent with our code. I have no changes other than what the staff has mentioned, so with that, I would move that we approve the final plat for TD Equestrian subdivision.
Okay, have a motion by RJ Comer to approve, approve this plat?
I'll say.
Staff comments? Have a second by Gary Peeler. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor state "I".
"Aye".
Opposed? It passes. Item number three is the preliminary plat for Nails Adams Road subdivision, tax map 073, part of parcel 1.00, 8.23 acres, Nails Adams Road, Dixon, Tennessee, A1 agriculture, 1st District.
Okay, this was also surveyed by Kristy, surveying to create six new lots. This area is serviced by Sylvia, Tennessee City Pond Utility District. There is a four-inch water main that runs down the road to provide water, you'll see in the copy of the email. With it being four-inch, it can do the lots, but there will be no fire hydrant requirements on it. Mr. Collins?
All right, since we are looking at a preliminary plat, I'll start with planning issues. This area is identified on our county growth plan as a county rural area, where agrarian low-density residential development is requested to continue. The county, our county land use and transportation plan mirrors much of the growth plan's vision for retaining the agrarian low-density residential characteristic. Under zoning issues, I just merely cited the, where to find the bulk zoning standards for the A1 district. As it appears on the preliminary plat, each of the lots appear to meet all the minimum requirements for A1. Under plat issues, I did make mention, just for your information, of the county roads inventory for Nails Adams Road. It has a, of course, an accommodating right-of-way width, 50 feet, and an 18-feet-wide pavement width, according to their inventory. I will mention that Article 4 of our subdivision regulations has a list of deficiencies that if the roadway that we're talking about, where development's going, does, you know, if it's more than one deficiency, then we would be in the position to require improvements be made. However, it's just that 18-feet-wide pavement width's the only deficiency, so it does not cross that threshold. As far as drainage, the, you know, the land appears to drain in a northwestern fashion. There are two 60-inch drainage culverts that cut underneath the existing roadway, and then there's a 30-foot-wide drainage easement that runs along a portion of this road, crossing to channel, you know, drainage between the two culverts just mentioned. There is a tributary of Yellow Creek that parallels this portion of this property. On note number four on the plat, Darren has made sure to cite proper culverting and ditching for each lot, for its individual development. For access to the site, you know, to of course, address any potential issues with line-of-sight distance, staff does recommend addition of notes to, you know, to the plat to ensure that there's suitable distancing from the nearest curves. Notably, lots one and two, and then maybe lot six. So it's, it is something that we have in the past required a note or two for providing, you know, a distance from, for installing the driveway for the respective lots, to away from the curve as best as possible. Let's see, lastly, the, you know, the presence of that drainage easement for the tributary. You know, I was, we don't have a lot of pertinent language in our regulations for this, however, it seems like that there would be, if there's any development, or particularly if an altering, alteration of that water course is involved, then that would involve a permit from TDEC to be done. So I certainly don't want to attempt to cite what TDEC will say or require, so I do yield to TDEC for, you know, further guidance on any alterations that's done within this tributary. Last comment I've got, for, you know, in more recent years, the US Postal Service has had delivery standards in place for requiring for, you know, developments, developments in general, the review by the local postmaster to confirm if they can continue individualized mail service to the new residents, or require a cluster mail service. I think we are, you know, it's gotten to that point where it is good advice from staff to the applicant early in the development process to go visit the local postmaster and just see if, see what they're, they're willing to accept, or willing, or ready to require for a development. Exceptions to the cluster mail delivery installation, that's at their discretion, whether or not they would want that, or they will, you know, allow for continuation of individual mailboxes. We don't have anything in our local regulations for this, but that, we are visiting this and other, a couple of other communities here in the county, so it may be something in the near future that we at least cite this step as best practices for a developer. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, as I read the planning issues here, it states that low-density residential development is expected to continue. Do you see this as being low-density development?
I do, yeah. It's, I think that along with the character of this area, and the availability of public water, which it's a four-inch line, I think that that's too, you know, if you can apply this as criteria, that would be too criteria for this characterization, and maybe why that the four-inch line has not been since upgraded to six-inch. And they, that Sylvia Pond to, you know, would weigh in on whether or not, they've got this on their schedule to be upgraded, but they may have very well noted or identified the, you know, the county's growth plan identifies this as a rural area where they're not expecting progressive growth.
I will move that we accept the preliminary plat, Nails Adams Road subdivision, Nails Adams Road, 1st District. Have a motion by Todd Berry to approve the preliminary plat on item number three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by David Brogdon. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor state "I".
"Aye".
Opposed? Okay. We'll move into item number four, preliminary plat for Welch Estates subdivision, tax map 107, part of parcel 5.02, 6.93 acres, Jason Chapel Road, Dixon, Tennessee, A1 agriculture, 2nd District.
Okay, this was also surveyed by Kristy, surveying to create six new lots. This area is also serviced by the Sylvia, Tennessee Pond Utility District, and it's the same thing, it has a four-inch water line that runs, and as you'll see by the email, they can provide water service at the same time, there will be no fire hydrants required. Collins?
Okay, this one, you know, of course, does seem to have some similarity to the previous one, with the exception that this area is identified on our county growth plan as planned growth area, where it is anticipated that a little bit more density to the residential development is anticipated. Of course, that pending any upgrades done to the existing infrastructure. Perhaps as far as, you know, if Mr. Berry has a, you know, a similar question on this one, I, you know, of course, would have to yield to Sylvia Pond to see if they have this on their radar to upgrade, but this one does seem a little, a little bit more like, this should be a higher priority than that it's identified in the planned growth area. But anyhow, the Dixon County Land Use and Transportation Plan does, you know, mirror the county's growth plan for envisioning, you know, medium-type residential development, provided the necessary infrastructure is provided. This property is zoned A1. Staff checked the individual lots, and it does appear that they all meet the minimum standards for A1. The right-of-way width on Jason Chapel Road, according to the county's inventory of roads, adequate 50-foot right-of-way, a 16-foot wide pavement width. So, you know, as best as I can tell, you know, it's not that there's more than one deficiency identified here on this roadway, so it's, you know, it may not be something where we feel it's crossed the threshold to require any pavement improvements. As far as drainage, drainage is in a, there's an existing pond on the remaining acreage with the parent parcel, that more than likely, it'll be the recipient of additional runoff from these lots. Of course, along with properly-sized culverting for all the new driveways for the new lots, ditching should be confirmed to be installed, and made reference to note number three on the plat. So by final plat, it just, you know, that note about adequate culverting and ditching should be, you know, for, installed for each building lot. As far as access, again, staff recommends that notes to the plat to ensure suitable line-of-sight distancing from the nearest curves on Jason Chapel Road for notably lots one, five, and six. Of course, I'm not going to repeat that about the cluster mailbox standard by the Postal Service, but, you know, you do get the idea here, and it is, again, recommended the developer check with the local postmaster to see what they want to see.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Chairman, since this is a preliminary, I move that we approve it, and when it comes back for a final, we probably need to look at driveways, you know. Let's see what Rick Robinson does with them, and then we'll come back and address the driveway restrictions.
Well, since the plat had to be turned in, I've been back out there, and I can tell you pretty much where the, the drive, the greatest curve is between where four and five come together, those two lots, so.
Right at the top of the hill there.
The drive, yeah, yes, that's right. The driveway for four will be, should be next to three, and the driveway for five will be next to six, to keep them away from the sharp road.
Right, right.
Give them sufficient distance.
Right. Well, like I said, once soils gets done, determine it.
I think this is pretty good over there.
I think it is too up there. I believe it will be. I believe it will be.
Have a proper motion to approve preliminary plat, well, I don't remember four, by Robert Woodrow.
I'll second.
Have a second by Kristy Sullivan. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
"Aye".
Opposed? Okay, it passes. Item number five is preliminary plat for Smith Estates subdivision, tax map 076, parcels 28.04 and 28.07, 11.32 acres, Old County House Road, Charlotte, Tennessee, A1 agriculture, 1st District.
Okay, this was surveyed by Kristy, surveying to create nine new lots. As you'll see from the email, the Water Authority has a six-inch water line that runs the length of development down Old County House, which is no problem providing water. Of course, it will be required to have one new fire hydrant, and of course, at this time, the surety hasn't been paid, but will need to be before the final. Mr. Collins?
All right, as far as this being a preliminary plat, starting with planning issues, this is identified area in the county's planned growth area. And the, I checked the land use and transportation plan, and it, again, mirrors the same conception, conceptualized vision for this area for more progressive residential development. As far as zoning issues, zone day one, all the lots appear to comply with the minimum standards. However, there is a, an overhead electric line, an easement's so noted on this plat, and showing how that the individual building envelopes for each of the proposed lots are, will be, you know, affected. The most notable, it won't totally eliminate building potential for any of these lots, but it will get in the way, if you may, so they'll have to, you know, whenever they go to select a site for the principal structure, the dwelling, they'll have, for many of those lots, they'll have to pick one side or the other of that easement to steer, you know, stay clear of it. Drainage, it appears that the drain, drainage for this area is primarily in a southern direction for the lands in question. I note, note number four on the plat, culverting and ditching's been confirmed to be installed, so that's, you know, it's been good consistency thus far with our, with these preliminary plats. Mr. Darnell's already covered hydrants, so I won't touch that. For access and driveway placement, it does appear to staff, you know, that it's a fairly suitable line-of-sight distance for all the proposed lots, looking in both directions on this roadway. And then, of course, my last comments, it's, you know, being that this is a major subdivision, it's, I think this is going to be a common practice to, for applicants and developers to get used to going and visiting the local postmaster with these developments early in the process, so that they can anticipate and pass along to the new residents buying those lots, how they can expect to get their mail service.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
With, with the growth that's happened out there in that area, you know, we've had several things in County House Road, and right there in Liberty Road and what have you, and so this may be a candidate for one of those cluster mail services right there, with the anticipation of others, you know, going along on the other side of this road and stuff. So that may be something that they may want to look at on this one.
And I'd like to ask Brian something about this, it may be a bit official, some little survey here about centralized cluster mailbox system. And maybe, I was wrong, but I was always under the impression when I saw that, where you have those boxes, it would be for like a gated community, like, where originally it comes to mind, I did not know that, and this maybe just might mean I knowing that they, that they did that on existing county road, where you have a cluster mailbox, and then several lots past that. I don't know that I've ever seen that, but I mean, that's just, you know, I'm just trying to see what exactly is expected by the planning commission on this particular.
Well, Mr. Christie.
Oh, new thing.
Yeah. My understanding of the postal regulations is it could entail just what you're talking about. I know at first, the concern of the postmasters is where you're extending mail service down a road that the mail hasn't traditionally run down, and it's creating extra carrier time.
Yeah, it's a street, like, it's a mall, too.
Exactly. Whereas, I mean, the mail goes up and down Old County House Road every day. I think he's, would be within his rights, this postmaster, Charlotte, would be in his right to say, well, we're not going to do that anymore, but I don't think that's going to happen just yet, but I agree with staff that we've got to be prepared for the contingency. I have strong opinions about it, but they're not, this is probably not the right forum to air those, but I think you're on the right track, and I think at some point, we're going to have to do some, something about covenants to maintain these things, because over time, stuff's going to happen to them, and they're not really on the private property of the people who are going to be receiving their mail there.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, where this grew out of is in developments that, not in Tennessee, but in some of the other states, where developments were homeowners' associations. And the homeowners' associations, even though there's public streets and there's no gate, but the development has a homeowner association, and the, and the cluster box is maintained by the HOA, and the property that it's on is maintained by the HOA. There it makes sense. But here in rural Tennessee, where we don't have homeowners' associations in ungated communities, the.
Or common property.
Yeah, the postal service is trying to create a convenience, which is admittedly a convenience, in an area where we don't have the sort of legal infrastructure to place it and maintain it. And it's well beyond our capacity as a planning department, or as a planning commission, to substitute the regulation for a federal agency. So what we, all we can really do is draw your attention to it. All we can really do is say, this is an issue, we strongly suggest you go talk to the. All we can really say, this is an issue, we strongly suggest you go talk to them. But what I can tell you is if you come to back, back to us with a final map and you've figured something out with the postal office service and we can confirm that, we're going to help you. We're going to help you figure it out.
Well, I'll talk to the postal. If you get a letter from that. If you're a bit mad on this.
If you get a letter stating that they will deliver to each house, that's all we need.
Yeah, I can do it. I just wanted to see what y'all viewpoint on it was. Like I said, this is new.
It's still new to me, too. I've, it was about three years ago, I went to a conference and was just, you know, blown away by this new concept that had been around two, three years already. But in rural communities, which that's who I, who I work with, rural communities, that the postal service is not delayed or stalled by just, you know, such development that it's, you know, causes for delays in the mail service. And I think that's what really pushed this was to, if it's, if there's, you know, the local postmaster feels that his carriers just can't get the mail delivered in a day, you know, like they normally do, then something's got to give. And that's where the instructions say, go visit that local postmaster and if it's delivery on just lots on one side of the road and it's a busy roadway or something where they just can't install a walking path, a sidewalk or whatever, like you might see in a gated community or a PUD or such, then the postmasters may say, here's your exemption, you don't have to, you can just, we're going to deliver your mail to individual mailboxes. But, but it goes through them as far as that.
Now, if you add new roads, you probably a good chance they'll require that.
Well, yeah, then I could see that more, you know, the boxes are gated communities usually, but I understand.
But strictly at their.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve preliminary plat, Smith Estates subdivision, Old County House Road.
I have a motion by Todd Berry to approve the preliminary plat for item five. We have a second.
Let's add staff comments to that.
With, with staff comments to approve.
I second it.
I have a second by Robert Woodrow. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, passes. All right, do we want to go ahead and do the traffic study or do a recess?
It's up to you.
Let's go ahead and do the traffic study. The, Mr. Darnell, you want to address this?
Sure.
This was sent back.
If you remember, the traffic study had come through here and went to the county commission. They went to the public hearing and then a final reading. They come up with a few changes they'd like to make. I think everybody has a copy of that. You know, they sent it back to the planning commission. The planning commission can vote to approve it, they can vote if they don't agree with it, but either way, the final decision will be with the county commission. It does affect the zoning change.
Mr. Chair, one, I'm glad that the county commission, the commission gave us the opportunity to weigh in on changes they make. I was a little bit surprised, though, because they're the legislature, right? You know, they get to make, they get to make their decisions. And I was surprised that they sent a change back to us for our review, but that was very kind of them. And had the changes been so substantive that I thought it was necessary that the working group of this commission and the commissioners here who worked on these guidelines needed to weigh in, I think that would be appropriate. As it stands, what I'm going to share with you, my view is these changes are, they're substantive, but they're not so substantive that they fundamentally change what the traffic study guidelines are intended to do. I think they reflect the deliberative process that a government is supposed to go through. And so I am fine with them and I recommend, if we have to take some sort of action, I think the action would be to let the commissioners know that we agree with them.
Okay.
And we need to send it back to them for approval.
Yes, yes, here we go back to them for a final reading on the December twentieth. Do we just need a resolution that's the sense of this body? Well, it would be a resolution from the county commission. They just sent it back here, you know, saying this is, hey, well, this is what we suggest, but you know, it's not your final decision anyway. It's just, this is what they would like. They would like you to be in agreement with it if possible. Well, it's real nice of them to ask us, Mr. Darnell, but I think that, I think we, we don't have a problem with this and they're going to do what they're going to do anyways. Let's just say somehow that will meet everybody's needs, that we concur with what they're saying and it has our approval.
Mr. Collins, I agree with you, but I believe we have a motion by Mr. Comer to.
If a motion is needed, it's a motion.
And I'll, I'll second his motion that we send it back to the county commission for their final approval.
All right, we have a proper motion by RJ Comer to approve the changes the commission has done to the traffic study and a proper second by Robert Woodrow. All, you want to roll call or all in favor? All in favor to send it back?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll send it back. Okay, we're going to take about, let's take a five minute, it may be a long five minute. If you all want to go in the hall and discuss what you want to present, like I say, three presenters for and three presenters that's potentially against the changes and I will give each speaker three minutes each. And I've seen a few people come in, if they would, please sign in. So we'll take a, we'll take a five minute recess and it is seven thirty-six, so seven forty-one.
Two, three.
We'll come back.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to speak?
I'd like to.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you should tell him where it's planted.
How's the name?
She's just extremely, she's grown, but she can't remember.
Oh, sure is.
Yeah, she makes that really.
(laughing).
I take her, I take her over seriously, yeah. So she had one, just a glass. But she was, she got married.
She's close, sir.
She got married.
Does she? Because she can see, but you gotta tell her. Yeah.
I think she's pretty quick.
Does she miss her?
I'm here today.
Maybe he's late.
Yeah.
They got some heat working, they tore everything else up.
I miss her terribly, but I, you know.
I like those things.
I want her to be here. I said the same thing. I said, "Make it one of y'all new kids, you're married."
She was good candidate, but she got over.
I said the same thing. He's a good guy, I like him.
Well, let me, let me, let me.
I like, well, and he loves her. In your butt with no Brian. Is he talking about Amy? Oh, he said it to her.
We're ready to get to beer. So we'll get us all.
When we were. Hi, at one of her, uh, wedding parties. We were, we were cleaning up afterward and Matt said, "Hey, put them rose petals in a baggie. We'll need them for the next year."
Come on back here and just sit back there.
Oh, we give her so much hell. And they're running it well, it's like. That's, she's parking her, yeah. And the new girl, I'm sorry, too, so it worked out.
You went to Saint.
She got married?
Was he any kind of friend?
I don't know.
How many say? Uh, she didn't say in the way, in the way they're saying.
Uh, he's sixty-three. She was three-year gender of the male, so she was a guy. And, I mean, he's a good guy. He's been in our, um, worked his whole life on the community. They gave him a golden parachute to retire. But she lives on the bay, that's why. Yeah. No, she's not here. Yeah, oh, it kills me. She's, she's my girl. And she was the one that I really saw.
Yeah, that should be, that should generally be.
It kills me, but she's happy, and I talked to her about every other day. I wish she had a guy that she could see. Yeah, I got married, I got married by, you know, in a draft. I love, he's a good guy. You know, neither one of them is a family secretary. It has, yeah, exactly. And listen, she is an ever-growing woman. They've, they're like, she's, like, they're. He's a grudge Gary. Grudge Gary.
Did I brought this wrong? I'll tell him I brought it wrong. Alright, thank you.
As soon as Georgia got here, that became over.
Okay, we'll come back to order now, and we will now move into the proposed subdivision regulation changes. But the first three we're gonna do are gonna be zoning issues.
Correct. So you want to speak first, or how you wanna do?
You want Robert to present?
But who is here to speak on behalf of changing the zoning? And who is here? You, what, which one are you for, sir? Are you the designated speaker for?
I'm for.
Okay, who is the designated speaker for against changing the zoning rigs?
I'd like to speak against.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
I'll speak for.
Okay.
I'll speak for.
I think we got, we got three, so. Alright, um, we'll start out by letting, you wanna keep time, or you? We'll, we'll give, uh, each of you three minutes to come up where Mr. Darnell's at and present to the, uh, panel, you know, your reason for what your belief is. Just state your name and where you live, please.
My name's Philip Beerheart, I live in Mayesville Road, Dixon, Tennessee. Uh, in the Sylvia community. I've been a resident of Dixon County for over forty years, I'm a third-generation, uh, farmer. Uh, my son is a graduate of Tennessee Tech University. My other son is a graduate of Austin P. State University. I am concerned about wildlife. We do have wildlife plots and wildlife, uh, habitat that people don't really take in consideration. We also have a family farm, it's close to Nils Adams that you discussed today. It's of almost a three-hundred-acre farm, it's been in our family for almost a hundred or a hundred-plus years. So we do have a vested interest in this, in changes. So I'm just gonna read real quick, I know I've just had three minutes, Mr. Chairman. But first of all, I wanna thank each of you for sacrificing your time, you know, to serve on this local planning board. I'm concerned about this, I'm a concerned citizen of Dixon County, and I urge you to vote a definite yes. So we all know this is gonna change the minimum lot size from one acre to two-point-five acres, hundred feet to two-hundred feet, and requiring the, uh, lot width depth ratio from four-point-one to three-point-one. So, basically, I'm just gonna read what I sent in on my letter. Some real estate developers in our county appear to have the stack them and pack them approach to housing development and planning. The approach does not reflect orderly and thoughtful development. For instance, in our neighborhood, a real estate developer recently stacked a development full of spec houses, all the same type, this fall, on small lots in a rural area that has no less than five-acre parcels. In that area, there was no plan apparently involved. There is not a development similar to this within a ten-mile radius of that development. There's no infrastructure for these homes, such as broadband, internet, so no sewage lines, no natural gas. The children that go, that will go to these homes will have to drive into town just to do their homework on the internet. The need for those homes was purely driven by profit and stacked as many on the parcel as the law allows to maximize the returns of that developer. As you can see, I sent in two pictures, the beautiful rolling hills that were Maple Grove Road turned into an eyesore within three months. Three months, that turned into an eyesore. They were stacked on each other, and that was not orderly development, it did not contribute to the orderly development of planning. I also wanna stress that there are, uh, from what I understand, a real estate, a licensed real estate agent on this board, I feel like that's a conflict of interest. If there's not, in the bylaws, if there's not any provision, it should be on this planning committee, if there's a conflict of interest, there's a monetary, um, reward that is in this vote, that person should recuse from that vote. If it's at direct or indirect. And I think on an ethical, if there's not, there should be built into the bylaws of this committee, that those people should recuse from that vote, because they would benefit from the additional size of the parcels. Lastly, I wanna thank each one of you for allowing me to voice my support for these important changes in planning. These changes will develop the agricultural land that will contribute to a real plan of orderly development.
Well, let's, let's stay on track, we're, we're out of time, I'm sorry.
In our county, and this is gonna last for generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Beerheart, thank you. Who's next here to speak for? Mr. Ford, was you gonna come up and speak for?
Against.
Oh.
Can we alternate, can we go back to Ford?
Yeah, let's, let's do that, yeah, come on up, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Shane.
It's a little warm in here, I apologize, I don't regulate the heat.
Alright, I'm gonna start my time. Well, I mean, you can tell me stop, I'm sure I'll be long-winded, but I'll try to keep on it, too. Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, my name's David Ford, I live in this community and I work in this community. Um, I'd like to ask you guys just a couple of quick questions. Uh, would you raise your hand if you're retired or, uh, semi-retired, if you're on the board? Three, would you raise your hand if you, Mr. Pillington, I see you there. Thank you. Would you raise your hand if you, in some way, are employed or receive financial benefit from the construction industry? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that's about, it's more than half of the people that are gainfully employed. It's probably a fair representation of our community. A lot of our community gets their income from blue-collar jobs, from the construction industry, just like I do. So I'm against the proposed zoning changes and the changes to the subdivision regulations. It feels more like prevention than planning. I do think we need planning. I do think there's a need for homes that are affordable. And I think the planning commission should seek out areas and should embrace developers, realtors, all portions of the construction industry, so that we can have higher density development in specified areas that will allow us to grow our community, that's coming, whether we want it or not, it's, it's coming here, but it's managed and organized, instead of just saying prevent. The data clearly shows that the rural preservation of our community is not in jeopardy. There's tons of road frontage, tons of acreage, and tons of demand for housing here. Specifically for entry-level housing. So I, I don't think that it's criminal that I wanna work in a free-market economy where I build houses that people wanna buy. My question is, before you make any motion or you make any vote, did you approach the people that are buying these houses? Because for every one person that's unhappy, I see dozens that are at the peak of their life because they're getting their first home. Their opinion is valuable, and it, it's valuable to a point, they're spending their money. That's their job, they should have the right to buy what they want. It's not illegal or criminal for everybody else to have a house like we do. And I think that's being missed out, because the larger voice of we're unhappy is the one that's being heard. And I wonder, did this committee, before you developed these subdivision regulation changes, or the zoning ordinance changes, did you research how much development that was going through A1 versus R1? Did you seek out places that we could support R2 and R3 zoning? Did you identify those that you could communicate and say, "Hey, developers, hey, real estate agents, hey, builders, come to us with this area, we'd like to embrace it, we'd like to support it." Because it's obvious there's a need. Dixon has been one of the largest growing communities for the last year.
Pops up, I'm sorry.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time, I, I wish you would vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Alright, now, we have somebody wants to speak for.
Good evening, my name's Dennis Holes, I live over on, uh, off Nils Adams, actually. Been there for a little over two years, I have a farm over there. And, uh, first I wanna say, this, this proposal is not to stop development, so let's be clear. It's talking about organizing development in a different way. Nobody's saying no more development, let's don't change the, what's going on. Secondly, start looking at the conflict between telling farmers, "You got a green belt, we're encouraging you to keep your farm," and then on the other side, "We're gonna string houses all the way down across your farm, right on the road." Okay, those two policies need to be reconciled in some way, 'cause to me, one's pulling one way and one's pulling the other way. Yes, Dixon is growing, and one of the reasons Dixon's growing is because, and as the gentleman said, there's a lot of vacant land, but nobody's, where the, where the building's occurring is stripping down the roads, lot, 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 lot. The cheap, easy way to do it is put a driveway on a road and a house on one acre, and you just string them down the road. So what you end up with is cars trying to get out on the road, it's, it's not planned development. Okay, and that's why I think this is a good thing. First of all, this isn't rocket science, you know, I, I sent you all an email, and, and I talked about the fact that I come from an area, Southern California, which I'm a refugee from and never wanna go back to. And I was a mayor, I was on a city council, and nobody wanted to do anything different than what's being done right here. And what happened is where I live, in Encinitas, California, we call ourselves the ca- flower capital of the world. We had row crops of flowers, we had greenhouses of flowers, kinda like here with agriculture, very few people. And what you decide isn't about what happens over the next year, it's what happens over the next twenty years. Because you're setting a course, course of action. And what happened where I lived, the course of action is just kinda like this. Nobody really wanted to do anything, they didn't wanna offend developers, they didn't wanna offend real estate, they wanted to keep things going. And what happened is, one by one, the growers sold out. First one sold out, then one sold out, and then the one that's growing over here says, "Well, they got houses built next to me, I don't, I don't wanna farm in here with these people right next door, they're complaining about what I'm spraying my field with, they're complaining about all kinds of things." So then he said, "I'll just sell out, too." And now I'm here to tell you, twenty-five years later, every dang one of them was gone. And what we got was houses, condominiums, traffic you wouldn't believe. Now, is that gonna happen in one year, three years, five years? No, heck no. But what I'm saying is, now's the time to decide what you want it to be, because otherwise, by default, what you get is something nobody will like. I can tell you that right now. And this isn't rocket science. Fifteen years ago, I was in Ireland, and we went, we were in farming areas in Ireland, and they all did the same thing. You could drive through the farms.
Time.
Time's up? Okay, same thing, a house in front of every farm right down the road. So think about your infrastructure, sheriffs, schools, who's paying for all that? 'Cause at the end of the day, the people who are already there end up paying, the developer got their money and left.
Thanks, sir. Okay, who wants to speak next in the against? Mr. Pate? And just for the record, I did receive everybody's email, and I did read them, and I apologize, I did not respond back to each of those. They were very lengthy and, and many emails, but I did read them. Yes, sir, Mr. Pate.
I'm Michael Pate, um, I, I was born here in Dixon County. I lived in Tennessee City, uh, for just about all of my life, until I, uh, got out of high school, got out of college, and, uh, I've lived in Humphreys County and Dixon County. I kinda trade back and forth, uh, my wife does not like that, I'll sell my house if you wanna buy it, and I'll build another one or buy another one. I, I've tried to review these rules, I've tried to keep an open mind. I, I don't think it'd kill building, I don't take that approach. Uh, I think it will absolutely kill affordable houses, they'll be gone, uh, unless you get fortunate enough to find a leftover lot in the city limit somewhere. Most people will not be able to afford a home here if this takes place. Uh, just to, some of the high points here, uh, one thing that I, I, the forty-nine percent rule on the road frontage is, is the biggest problem. Um, I don't have a problem with the two-point-five acres, uh, I don't like it, but I can, I can deal with it, I'd rather it be one-point-five. Um, I don't like the two-hundred-foot road frontage rule, I can stomach it, I'll figure it out, I, I'd rather have one-fifty. Uh, the triangle lot thing, that's completely made up, um, it truly is. Uh, I lived on a triangle lot here in this county, one of the members of this board currently lives on a triangle lot of this county. You, the, they don't have to have the police out there talking about where the property line is, they don't have to argue with their neighbor 'cause the dog's off the triangle, I'm telling you, it's made up. Um, I've got a triangle lot on McElhaney Road, it's probably gonna be the most beautiful lot on the entire development. Y'all are more welcome to drive out there and look at it. Uh, nobody can come up with a good reason, other than they just say, "I don't like it." Well, I'm not selling it to you, don't buy it, let somebody else have it, they'll, they'll like it. Um, there's this other argument that, "Just change it from A1 to R1, and we'll let you keep going." And so my daughter's pretty young, she's six years old, or twelve, or, so, excuse me, sixth grade, she's twelve years old, and I was trying to explain to her how this works, I said, "Honey, if that logic was true, Dixon County would ban dogs." But then they would say, "But if you call your dog a cat, you can still have it anyways." I said, "What do you think about that? Do you think that would work?" And she said, "Well, no, Dad, that doesn't sound reasonable." So, we can't just say in a paperwork issue of, "If you'll come in here and call it R1, you can still put all these houses on the road and eat up the road frontage, and we'll all be fine with it." And members of this board have, have given me that answer when I've asked about it. Also, members of this board have talked to me about the fuel depot when I'm questioned about this. I, I'm a builder of two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, I have no comparison to the fuel depot, I have nothing to do with the fuel depot, I do realize I don't have the, the legal services that the fuel depot has, I realize I'm low-hanging fruit, and, and I can be taken advantage of and not have the people that they have to, to fight something like this, but, but truly, this has nothing, in my opinion, to do with that. Yes, there, there are rules on here that, that, that probably need to be changed, so I, I'm open, I, I agree with it. But I think this is a huge far reach of government. And this is the government saying, "You've bought it, you've worked hard for it, you own it, now let me tell you how to manage it, let me tell you how to use it, let me tell you how to sell it to others." And I just ask that, that you guys really think hard when you're thinking about taking a homeowner, or a landowner's rights from them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pate.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Jamie Luster. I, uh, I apologize, I wasn't prepared to speak in front of you, but I have plenty of thoughts on this, and I'll try to keep it within those three minutes. I moved here when I was fifteen years old. I've lived here for the last thirty-three years, I've worked in this county for twenty-nine years. I work for a transportation company that employs, employs over almost three-hundred people in this community. I also am a small farm owner, so yeah, I see it from both sides of this. As a employer, yes, we need the people coming into this community, because we need good employees. We struggle to find employees every single day. As a resident of the community, my personal opinion is, and the opinion of many people here, is that we don't want the type of growth that many communities around Nashville have learned the hard way. The... If you look at, and, and I will say this, I deliver to most of these communities. I deliver for McDonald's, I work for Martin Brauer Company, we go into these every single day. The traffic is horrendous, you can't get away from it. It takes us, on my side of the county, it takes me thirty-five minutes right now to get from my side of the county to exit one-seventy-two. It takes me less than that to get to downtown Nashville. As we continue to build this out, we got to come with this with some thought and some planning into it. Right now, the infrastructure, and this is coming from a person in transportation in this county, the infrastructure right now for traffic does not exist the way that it should. It's just not there, and bringing more people into the community is not going to help. Now, I'm not anti-growth, I'm not anti-growth at all. I went to school with David Ford, all of it, God, death, he's a great guy. I'm not against him making a living. What I am for is common sense. And this, moving this to two-and-a-half acres, especially in the agricultural area, makes sense, because most of us moved out there because we wanted to be in that type of community. I live right down the road from Maple Grove, I know exactly what it looks like. It's strip house after house after house after house after house. A beautiful, a beautiful area that is now unsightly. And that's coming for the rest of us if we continue to allow this to happen on one acre at a time, in the rural areas. If you want to live in that type of community, move into the city area. That's what it's for. If you want to live in the rural community, spread it out. That's what it's for. As a farmer, it's about becoming impossible for me to add to my farm, because land prices are out the roof. And they want to jack, it gets jacked up, because we can only add in small amounts.
Pops up, I'm sorry.
Okay, I apologize. But we can only add in small amounts, and those small amounts are overly priced.
Thank you, Mr. Luster. We have one more speaker, anybody? Come on up, please.
Hi, I'm Michelle Johnstone, I'm with Parker Perry Properties here in Dixon. I've been a Realtor here for twenty-six years. The biggest struggle that I see right now is young couples coming in wanting to own a home. Is there anybody in this room that's homeless right now? Anybody? I have clients right now that are literally homeless. They've moved in with their parents, they've moved in with their grandparents, they have moved in with aunts, uncles, because they can't afford home. They're pre-approved for a loan, but they cannot buy anything. That's unfair. Um, I make a living selling real estate, as do others here in the room, builders, surveyors, and all that. But I do what I do because I care about these people. And when I have a young mother call me and say, "What about this house?" And I have them, you know, check and say, "Okay, does this match up with what's going to, you know, work out for your family?" Well, guess what? It's already gone, because, you know, somebody else has gotten to it before they have. But when it comes down to affordability, when you have a two-point-five-acre tract of land, that's going to throw the numbers off so much that a young couple is not gonna be able to afford it. We're looking at an acre lot right now, forty to eighty thousand dollars. Then you try to put a house on it. If you do that with two-point-five acres, it's going to be impossible for young people to be able to buy a house. Um, we need the young people to still want to live here. Uh, we don't need them moving off into other counties around us, we need them here. That's going to make the difference in our community. So, please, consider voting no. Um, you know, as far as the two-point-five acres, I, I just think that that's going to be a detriment, um, you know, for young buyers out there wanting to own a home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnstone. Okay, right quick, before we go back into our portion of this, I would like to ask the people who support the zoning changes in subdivision part, please stand. Okay. Thank you. Now, the folks that are... Now, the folks that oppose it, please stand. Thank you very much for your time. Okay, we'll move into these articles we're going to go over.
Okay, the first one will affect the zoning resolution. Number one, revised zoning resolution 5.041, subsections E4 and E5. You should all have copies of this. You'll see, we'll start with E4. It changes the lot size from one acre to two-and-a-half acres. That'd be the first item to start with.
All right, I'll start.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, I want to thank everyone who's here tonight. You took time out of your nights to be here. You care about your community, whether you're for this or against it. I applaud you for that. It's what makes this community special, is that when it matters, people show up, whether it's a zone change or whether it's a flood. It's what I love about this community. I appreciate y'all being here and sharing your thoughts. The community that developed these provisions were trying to address specific planning and zoning issues, and I want to touch on some of those things and share with you some statistics I put together this afternoon at home. I kept, I keep a file on every single planning commission hearing I attend, just like this. And I've been doing it since 2019, when I joined the commission. I looked at every single residential preliminary map that this body has seen since I joined the planning commission. Eighty-eight percent of those maps clustered every single proposed lot along an existing county road frontage to the exclusion of all the acreage behind it. Three out of every four residential lots proposed in the agriculture zone to this body in the time I've been on the planning commission, three out of four of the lots proposed are on an existing county road with a driveway onto an existing county road, and the acreage is ignored behind it. That kind of development, the committee concluded, was the kind of development that is maybe appropriate for Dixon County. And in answer to one of Mr. Ford's questions, yes, of course, we know, we look at where higher residential density is allowed. It's in the growth plan. Some of us may not agree with them, some of those growth plan boundaries, but it's in there. There are some parts of the county, you heard it tonight, it's intended for higher-density residential. And some parts of the county, you also heard that tonight, intended to be agrarian. And so that's already decided, and that's where the higher-density development should go. We also considered people who need to, what we've called starter homes, or the young couple that's looking to buy their first home. And this package doesn't prohibit any of that. This package doesn't prohibit densities far higher than the agricultural zone allows now. We simply require that that is really a residential use, and we have a zone for that. It's called a residential zone, and the agriculture zone is supposed to preserve agriculture uses. Now, one of the speakers said, "Oh, well, that's just, you know, calling a cat a dog." Well, that's clever, but it's not exactly true. A zone change is a different process, and that process is about how to create residential zones, single-family homes on smaller lots than one acre that are very good for starter homes. And no one on this board is saying that you can't have that in unincorporated county. In fact, there's portions of this county that are slated for that. They're called growth areas. But what's happening now is that we're getting really suburban development along our existing county road frontage at, you know, very narrow lots that, you know, that stretch backward and take over the county road frontage to the exclusion of everything else, and that's really residential development in an agriculture zone. And that's what we're trying to prevent. We're not trying to prevent affordable homes for new home buyers. We're simply trying to make sure our planning rules adjust correctly to what's being proposed. And what is being proposed to us by the stats I just referenced is that we have to see as planning professionals, if eighty-eight percent of the maps that are brought to us are taking up county road frontage, if three out of four of every lot proposed to us is on county road frontage, then we have to see a trend. And I was, I enjoyed hearing from you, Mr. Holt, says like, "I also am a refugee from Southern California. I also have seen this movie and know how it ends." I want to tell you about Thousand Oaks, California. It was named for the time when it had thousands of oaks. Now you won't find an oak tree in Thousand Oaks, California. Santa Clarita Valley, California, looked a lot like Dixon County in nineteen-eighty. I know I was there. You know what it looks like now? Murfreesboro. So what I'm trying to say is that this zone change is not about stopping developments, not about stopping affordable development. It's about making sure that affordable development is in the right zone and agriculture development's in the right zone. And make no mistake, my colleagues, this is a legacy vote, as Mr. Holt implied. This is a legacy vote. If five years, ten years, fifteen years from now, unincorporated Dixon County becomes just another suburb of Nashville, and somebody says rhetorically, "How did this happen?" The answer's going to be one night in November in 2021. The county planning commission had the opportunity to take a little step to preserve the rural agriculture character of Dixon County, and they didn't do it. And I, for one, want to be on the right side of that history, not on the wrong side of it. And so I, after hearing what everyone said and taking to heart every single letter that I received, I responded to, and if I missed you, I'm sorry because I intend to respond to every single one of them. But I support this change to two-point-five. It was a compromise. We had members of the committee promote, you know, saying that they want it to be five. It used to be five in the egg zone. It was changed to one back before there was pressure from Nashville, and now that we're seeing suburban pressure, it's time to compromise and go to two-point-five, which is reasonable. So I support it. I hope you do. I don't necessarily need to make a motion now. We can hear from everybody, but maybe come back to me, and I'll make the motion.
Okay. Any other board members wish to speak? Yes, Mike?
Well, let's make it as simple as it can be. Rich people are going to go where, that's why they got Franklin. That's why we're not living in Franklin. Money's going to sink its own level in this county. However much you pay for the land, it don't make no difference. If you want to buy it and you've got money, you're going to buy it. And just like she said, people can't afford it. Y'all might make me a millionaire. I've got a hundred acres. So you're going to make me a millionaire tonight? I don't care. I mean, I'm not going to sell mine anyway, but it don't make no difference. But there's people that can't afford two-and-a-half acres. The price they're getting, they're getting too much for land now. And the reason they're getting too much for land, because people are moving here from California. And it's a big bargain. They go up there and look at the house. Let me tell you, I went to Hawaii and seen a million-dollar home. It wouldn't have brought fifteen thousand dollars to Dixon County. But that's just the way it is. Look, we need to, we don't need to be in the real estate business. If you've got money, you're going to live on, you're going to live up there in Druid Hills. If you ain't got money, you're going to be down there for an hour and a half with B. So that's all I'm going to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Pillkin. Well, I have received calls for and against this, and the people that... People do want to preserve the land, but I had people with small tracts of land that wished to give their children an acre later down the road, and they don't have enough if it goes to two-and-a-half acres. There'll always be a problem somewhere, but I see both sides of this argument.
I want to say something, too. I also appreciate all the feedback. I think this is how it's supposed to work. This is how local government's supposed to work, and I love the feedback. I didn't respond to anybody, but I read every word. I agreed with what Pete said. There's a compromise here. I totally agree. There can be some changes. There need to be some changes, just like it was changed before. It needs to change again. But I think the affordability of houses, housing, for people who live and work, work in this county, but don't have a median income to afford a house that's built on a two-and-a-half-acre lot, which is going to drive the price to an unaffordable level. I think that has to be a consideration. So, I mean, I think there's a compromise here. I'm not saying I'm not for changes. I'm always for change, but I think you have to take everything into consideration.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any? Mr. Qualls, do you have a comment?
Well, just real briefly, Mr. Chandler, if y'all can believe that. I feel that what we're doing now is sort of, we're basing the way we do business here in this county so often on a legal fiction. We're calling one-point-zero-one acres in some instances agriculture. All of us know what a farm is. All of us know what agriculture is. That's not it. And the idea that, well, we can never do anything because we could never apply the reason, we always, everybody's always got to build a house where it's zoned for agriculture, and nobody can afford a two-and-a-half-acre lot, and in this day and age, I could not. I'll admit that. I just think that this body has shown good flexibility about allowing responsible residential development, and we've tried to make it as responsible as we can within the existing guidelines where we really don't have the authority to stop things that several of us have come to see as being very questionable practices. I don't have a mind that's set in concrete. I think we can do something to make this work, to make things better. Now, it's going to, any action this body takes pretty much always entails some negative consequences for somebody somewhere, and we've got to do what we can to minimize that. But this idea, if you're a young couple starting out, the only thing you can do is go somewhere out in agricultural zone and try to find one-point-something acres to build on, that's not very realistic. You know, as far as my idea of affordable, any single-family detached house in this county has long ago surpassed what my idea of affordable, my idea of an affordable house would be something that a man making twelve or thirteen dollars an hour could still afford to put his family in. And I'm afraid that's not going to exist with a detached, single-family house anymore. And I think that's sad, but this body can't fix that. But we can fix some of the things that are wrong with our zoning by really kind of trying to draw a bright line between what's residential and what's agricultural. And I'll cut it off right there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I do want everybody to be aware that these first three items that we're going to take action on, if you're for them or against them, you still need to attend the county commission hearings because it doesn't stop with us if you don't like the answer you get here tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Woodrow.
I, there's been a lot of discussion about the prices of houses and affordability of houses, and that this will prohibit young families from owning houses. And I just, you know, I've been very diverse in my income flow over the years, and part of it has been some real estate investment. And I can tell you, ten years ago, I was buying houses that you can't touch today. I mean, I've got some that I really, really wish they weren't as worth as much as they are because I'm having to pay the inflated property taxes on them because the inflated real estate prices of properties that around me have sold for. And these things go in cycles, and right now, we're at a peak. And yes, there is high demand, and yes, the prices are through the roof. And right now, we're in a state where, yes, maybe that young family that, you know, has a combined income of, you know, forty or fifty thousand dollars a year can't afford to own a home. And my, you know, my advice, and that's what I've told my children, just save your money. Put your money back because the prices will come down again. Now, I'm not saying they're going to come down, you know, you know, half or, you know, two-thirds, or if they're going to drop ten percent. I don't, you know, I don't know. If I had that crystal ball, believe me, I'd be putting my, you know, I'd be following that money for sure. But we don't. What we do have, what we can see ahead is if we continue, if we continue to allow these one-acre strip developments through, all through the agricultural zones, where they, we've discussed a couple tonight that are on four-inch water lines and the need to upgrade. And when is that upgrade going to happen? Well, we don't know. We don't know. Well, how many more houses are we going to build on those roads until we get a notice from the water departments saying, "Well, you can't build because we can't service that area through the utilities"? What areas are going to be, all of a sudden, we're going to have to start building, you know, high-voltage transmission lines to get enough electricity to certain areas? And what is that going to do to the rural atmosphere that we have? Now, yeah, you know, all of this is not going to, it's not going to kill the growth in the county. We don't want to kill the growth. We want to be, I want to be able for my children and my grandchildren to live here the way that my family has lived here for many, many years. But if we don't, if we don't put in some reasonable measures to control some of the growth, then we'll, you know, we're missing a great opportunity here.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Mr. Williams?
I'd like to make a brief comment and just say that not every residence that is built in Dixon County, whether it's on a one-acre lot or a two-and-a-half-acre lot, needs to be a single-family residence. The first house that my wife and I bought back over thirty years ago was a townhouse. And our neighbors, the only thing that separated our, my neighbors from on the left and the right was a firewall, and it was great. It was a great-looking townhouse, and we had a postage-stamp-sized yard that we had to take care of, but it was big enough to grow a little garden. And so that's, that's the perfect kind of development that needs to be created in Dixon County to allow first-time homeowners to buy a residence. And we have zoning that allows that. R1, R2, R3, PUD zones. So the way to get planned growth and basically have your cake and eat it, too, is to keep the agricultural areas agricultural and pick the areas that you need and want to grow as residential developments and develop those. And this, this change helps do that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else want to speak before Mr. Comer puts forth his motion?
Mr. Chandler?
Yes, sir.
I move that we amend zoning code section 5.041E4 to change the minimum acreage in the A1 zone from one acre to two-point-five acres, as shown in the draft distributed.
Okay, have a proper motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Harold Williams. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Todd Berry?
Yes.
Robert Woodrow?
Yes.
Darren Green?
No.
Mac Pillkington?
No.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
No.
Gary Peeler?
No.
Kristy Sullivan?
No.
Beth Garrett?
No.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay. I will make the motion that we change the lot size from two-and-a-half acres to one-and-a-half acres and everything else remain the same.
I'll second that motion.
Have a proper motion by Shane Chandler and a proper second by Beth Garrett. Any discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Woodrow.
I'm sorry, I didn't get my hand up quick enough. So with a one-and-a-half acre, are we still going to try to maintain the two-hundred-foot road frontage?
That will be the next item of discussion.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll go into roll call vote on this.
Todd Berry?
Yes.
Robert Woodrow?
Yes.
Darren Green?
No.
Mac Pillkington?
No.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
Yes.
Kristy Sullivan?
Yes.
Beth Garrett?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Chairman, that motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move into the E5 portion.
Okay, this is the lot width, changing it from one-hundred-foot to two-hundred-foot wide.
Anybody wish to present? Anybody wish to present?
I'll go ahead and talk about what the committee was trying to accomplish. The idea here, the whole package, different pieces try to accomplish the same thing. And that is to create distance, um, and space, um, that's more consistent with rural and agricultural development than what we've seen. Um, even though the existing minimum lot width is 100 feet at, um, at setback, we still see these very narrow lots, um, because what they do with these, they spread out. So at the setback, it's 100 feet, but at the street, it's less. Um, and so the 200 feet was, was developed as a way of making sure that, um, there's still going to be residential development along existing county roads. But if it's, if it's along, if it's along an existing county road now, we, we figured we would double it um, consistent with the 2.5. Now that we've voted for 1.5, there's probably some room, uh, to talk about something between 100 and 200 simply because the lot is now smaller. Um, I think, still think 200, a 200 foot lot width at 1.5 acres, David, that's not going to be a awkward lot. Will it?
No.
Okay. But one of the things this body might want to discuss is, is there somewhere between 100 and 200 that accomplishes the agriculture purpose, uh, but that doesn't necessarily reflect, that accurately reflects a 1.5 acre minimum?
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Anybody else want to comment?
Well, if we just kind of want to go on the same grounds we're going, uh, 1.5 acres is 60% of 2.5 acres. So should we maybe add 60% to the what, the lot width and go with a what, a lot width, if I can talk, of 160 feet?
What we need to do is vote on the 200, first of all.
Okay, well, I, I don't have a problem with 200.
If, did we have a proper motion for the 200?
I haven't made it yet, but, um, if, if this body wants to keep talking about it and I can make it later now.
You want further discussion or vote on the 200 now?
Well, I, I'll make the motion that we, uh, limit, uh, road frontage to 200 feet.
Second.
Have a proper motion by Robert Woodrow for the 200 foot of road frontage. Proper second by RJ Comer. And then any further discussion? If not, we'll go into a roll call.
Todd Berry.
Yes.
Robert Woodrow.
Yes.
Darren Green.
No.
Mac Pelkington.
No.
Robert Qualls.
Yes.
David Brogdon.
No.
Harold Williams.
Yes.
Shane Chandler.
No.
Gary Peeler.
No.
Christie Sullivan.
No.
Beth Garrett.
No.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Has to be someone from the prevailing side which is no vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would, if, uh, based on Mr. Qualls' recommendation at 160, based on the math that he's been able to do much better in his head than I am, I'm about to suggest and make a motion that we moved 160 foot in place of the 100 foot previously.
Okay, have a proper motion by David Brogdon to make this 160 foot rather than 200, as was presented. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Say that again.
We're.
We're doing that. Not, not.
There is a, there is an amendment to change the 200 to 60% of whatever, and it's going to be 160 foot.
At setback.
Yes.
Or are we talking road?
Road frontage.
The statute would read, if it were changed, it'd be 160 feet wide at the building setback line.
I'm sorry.
It's not a road frontage requirement, it is at the setback line.
And I think we read that wrong at the previous vote as well.
We, yeah, probably do.
We did. That's okay, I'll second.
Okay, have a proper motion by David Brogdon at 160 foot and a proper second by Beth Garrett.
At setback.
At setback. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one, one quick, one quick math item.
Yes.
At 200 feet and an acre and a half, you're still going to have to go back at least 300 feet to get an acre and a half, which sounds like a decent sized lot to me. So I really don't see a reason to shrink this at all.
Say that again.
200 feet wide, 300 feet deep, that's 60,000 square feet. That's not even an acre and a half. That's still a pretty decent sized lot.
Yep. I heard that's 200 feet.
Let's, let's, let's look this guy.
Any other discussion? Question, me and Kyle will go into roll call vote.
Todd Berry.
Yes.
Robert Woodrow.
Yes.
Darren Green.
No.
Mac Pelkington.
No.
Robert Qualls.
Yes.
David Brogdon.
Yes.
Harold Williams.
We're voting on 160 foot.
At the building setback.
No.
Shane Chandler.
Yes.
Gary Peeler.
Yes.
Christie Sullivan.
No.
Beth Garrett.
Yes.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We'll move into the, uh, next item there.
Okay, the next item is to amend the zoning resolution 3.030 to add subsection E. And you'll see in your paperwork, section E, notwithstanding the aforementioned subsections A through D, in agricultural A1 zone, no building permit or certificate of occupancy may be issued or any building erected on a lot subdivided after the effective date of provision, which abuts an existing county road or highway unless the road fronts for a distance of at least 200 feet. And this is the road frontage in the subdivision regulations.
Dave, I think that's, uh, it, you meant to say the zoning resolution. We're still on.
No, yeah, this is in the zone, yeah, correct. You're right, correct. Now, this is the actual road frontage.
Yeah, the difference here, what we've got here is that we've got zoning code section 30, 3.030 that deals with, um, the requirements of road frontage. And so section E, uh, would be added to essentially replicate. The idea here was to replicate what was done in the previous zone change of 5.041 E5, which this body didn't, you know, rejected at 200 and passed at 160. The idea of this zoning code amendment was to make sure these two zoning code provisions are the same. So having, having rejected 200 feet at setback, 200 feet at frontage now obviously creates a strangely shaped lot, does it not? So I can't really, in good conscience, move to approve, uh, subsection E at 200 feet now that we have approved 160 feet when they're intended to be identical. And so do we need a vote at the language proposed before we can change it?
Yes.
Then for formality's sake, I will move that we amend zoning section 3.030 uh, to add subsection E that requires a minimum road frontage per lot of 200 feet.
Have a proper motion by RJ Comer to approve the amended width of the road frontage. Do I have a second?
If it doesn't get a second, it fails for lack of a second. And thereby, obviously, it needs to vote.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Fails for lack of a second. Do I have a new motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that zoning code section 3.030 be amended to add subsection E stating the following. Notwithstanding the aforementioned subsections of A through D in the agricultural A1 zone, no building permit or certificate of compliance may be issued, nor any building erected on a lot subdivided after the effective date of this provision, which abuts an existing county road or highway unless the lot fronts for a distance of at least 160 feet. That is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Qualls. I do have a proper motion by Robert Qualls. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by David Brogdon. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote on this.
Todd Berry.
Yes.
Robert Woodrow.
Yes.
Darren Green.
Yes.
Mac Pelkington.
Yes.
Robert Qualls.
Yes.
David Brogdon.
Yes.
Harold Williams.
Yes.
Shane Chandler.
Yes.
Gary Peeler.
Yes.
Christie Sullivan.
Yes.
Beth Garrett.
Yes.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now move into the subdivision portion, which is, uh, item one, amended section of 4.102.3, which is the width and depth, width.
Width to depth ratio.
Width to depth ratio.
Under the section, it would change from four to one to three to one.
Mr. Chairman, would, would it be in order to put, point out for the benefit of the people here that what we've discussed up to this point is a matter of law and would have to be ratified or not by the county commission? Whereas what we're about to discuss is things that are within the competence of this body to determine in the way of subdivision regulations.
Correct. Right, everything that we previously, the three items we talked about will go to county commission. These last seven items is decided by this board and will not go to the county commission.
Correct.
So if anybody chooses to want to exit or stay, we welcome you to stay.
Shall I continue?
Please.
The, uh, the subcommittee looked at, again, this mechanism for creating wider distances, especially along road frontages. One of the ways to do that is, is, um, is depth, you know, width to depth ratio. How wide to how deep. Right now, we have a four to one width to depth ratio, which has created the lots we've seen, which are these long, narrow lots, which less road frontage, um, uh, and less space in between the properties and the structures built on them. Uh, it was actually our planning director that came up with the ideas, like we changed it to three to one. And he showed us, and he wasn't advocating, he just showed us how to look at it, showed us a picture. And he said, here's a lot we've approved at four to one, and here's what it would look like at three to one. And here's what it would look like at one acre, here's how it would look like at two acres, here's what it would look like at so forth. And we got to see how they spread out that way and make for a much more rural kind of character. It's the same amount of area, it's just the way the lot is shaped. So the committee felt that changing the width to depth ratio from four to one to three to one did not inhibit development in any way, could still be applied to the acreage and frontage we've now approved, but would spread this development out a little bit, especially along county roads, so that it would just appear and function more rurally, more agriculturally.
Thank you. Anyone else want to?
Is that a motion?
No.
Again, just, just a look, just a little math. For a one and a half acre lot on A1 that's 160 feet wide, in order to get that one and a half acres, you have to go back over 400 feet. And so you're, you're.
You're within that.
Well, you're, you're within that, but you're getting, but you're getting close to that. So if you, for instance, have a, uh, have a two acre lot, then in order to, in order to meet this one to three ratio or be less than, you're going to have to start spreading out your, uh, your, your, your road frontage. 160 feet is, is, is going to be too narrow on a two acre lot.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's just, I mean, just what I'm, what I'm trying to point out.
Yeah, whatever your road frontage is, that's your width, width of the thing. And you got more, it would be three times that, you could go back, that'd be your acreage size.
Which, which I think is, is, is fine. I mean, if, if, if there's, if there's a, an area that you want to develop and it turns out to be just because of, of the way the land ownership is or maybe the, how the, how the land perks, and you need more land in order to get your house built, uh, the, 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 the three to one still helps to keep spreading things out.
Mr. Chair, I will move that we amend subdivision regulation 4-102.3 to revise the width to depth ratio from four to one to three to one as shown in the draft distributed to the commission.
Have a proper motion by RJ Comer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Robert Woodrow. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, just to be certain what we're voting on, we are voting to replace the, the top one with both sub paragraphs A and B.
No, we're just voting on A.
Just voting on A. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call.
Todd Berry.
Yes.
Robert Woodrow.
Yes.
Darren Green.
No.
Mac Pelkington.
No.
Robert Qualls.
Yes.
David Brogdon.
Yes.
Harold Williams.
Yes.
Shane Chandler.
Yes.
Gary Peeler.
No.
Christie Sullivan.
No.
Beth Garrett.
No.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll now move into the B portion.
Okay, this will be an addition, uh, as part B. And it states, no lot when subdivided shall have less than four sides. Three sided or triangular lots are prohibited. No single side of any lot should be less than 50 foot except for lot line frontages on cul-de-sacs.
This provision was brought to the, brought to the subcommittee by Commissioner Woodrow, and we agreed with it. I'll share with you my thoughts on it, but I'd like to call on Commissioner Woodrow to share his. What we've seen on these subdivisions is that sometimes a triangle lot can work, especially can work if it's really big. But what we see is we see this awkward pie shaped lot squeezed into a subdivision at one acre point oh one, um, just to maximize the density. And we have not seen that to create the kind of planning. And oftentimes, we, we see it as a mechanism to stay on the road frontage rather than just go back into the acreage behind you. So again, this is a provision that says if, if we're going to require lots to have all four sides, we're going to be encouraging development to, to, to get off the road and go into the acreage behind it and start protecting our rural roads. That's why I supported it. And I'd like to invite Commissioner Woodrow to talk about why he proposed it.
Well, for the same reasons you've mentioned, plus, uh, you know, being on, member of my community for many, many years and, uh, uh, positions I've had over those years, uh, I've had several folks come to me with problems, uh, not very far away from me with these triangle lots as part of, uh, one of the McElhaney Farms was subdivided many years ago. And, uh, uh, some of the lots in, uh, areas we've all seen, if you watch television, uh, with the unfortunate incident of Joe Clyde. And in that backyard right there, there's several, uh, lots that all converge together. And tho- those are some of the issues that, you know, have been, uh, that have come to me. And, uh, I'm like, I, you know, I have no control, I have no authority over that, you know, over that. You need to call, you know, whoever, uh, whether it was animal control or whether it was the sheriff's department for people trespassing and whatever. And, uh, if we, if we eliminate that, that eliminates, uh, you know, some of these issues. And, uh, Mr. Pate alluded to a lot that, you know, he's developing earlier. Well, I can tell you, if that road was a major collector instead of a minor collector, you couldn't have put those lots in there like they were because of the site distance rules in that curve. So, uh, if we eliminate those triangle lots, uh, that just eliminates that, those issues altogether. And it provides for better planning.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Anyone else want to speak on this portion B?
Now, Mr. Chair, I move that we amend subdivision regulation 4-102.3 uh, to add subsection B, which shall read as follows. No lot when subdivided shall have less than four sides. Three sided or triangular lots are prohibited. No single lot of any, no single side of any lot shall be less than 50 feet except for lot line frontage on a cul-de-sac.
Okay, have a proper motion. Okay, have a proper motion by R.J. Comer?
And I'll second that, and just to note on that, we, we're, we're discussing a hundred and fifty foot road frontage and, and setback lines. This fifty feet is in a R1 or in R2 areas, but it needs to be included into this.
Okay. Have a proper second by Robert Witherow, any further discussion in this matter? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ready?
Yes.
Todd Barry.
Yes.
Robert Witherow.
Yes.
Darren Green.
Yes.
Mac Pilkington.
Yes.
Robert Qualls.
Yes.
David Brogdon.
Yes.
Harold Williams.
Yes.
Shane Chandler.
Yes.
Gary Peeler.
Yes.
Christie Sullivan.
Yes.
Beth Garrett.
Yes.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move into item number two, which is add section two dash one oh one point six subdivisions abutting existing county roads or highways to section two dash one oh one.
Okay, the addition will read, in the agricultural A1 zone that abut an existing county road or highway for a distance of more than four hundred feet shall not be divided more than fifty percent of the frontage along such existing county road or highway to a depth not less than five hundred and forty-five feet. Subdivision lots abutting an existing county road or highway must be continuous, contiguous to each other.
This was the most creative idea that the committee decided to propose. It actually came from another county in Pennsylvania that developed a, a package of various ways in which to preserve rural and agricultural land in, I think it's Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, if I recall correctly. And it, but it, what, what, quite simply what it is, is a mechanism to protect county roads. And they had the same problem in Cumberland, Pennsylvania that we've got here. And the way they solved it was, they said, any single subdivision can only subdivide, can only put lots on half of the road frontage it has, thereby encouraging the lots to be placed in the interior and build, you know, build a, you know, build a road from the county road to those lots. And what we've seen, in fact, just, just tonight, every single map that we saw tonight, every single lot was on our existing county road system. Every single one of those maps had plenty of acreage behind it, except maybe the last one, there was, there looked like there was a big use behind it, but. And I've already given you the stats, three out of four lots that came to us since November of 2019 on county road frontage. Eighty-eight percent of every map that comes to us, every lot's on county road frontage. This is the idea that says, look, we want to give you your lots, but you just got to help us protect a little bit of our county road system. And of course, if you've got, if you've got a, a lot that, you know, is four hundred feet, well, then you don't have to do it. If it's, if it's four hundred feet, you could take the whole thing, but if you've got more frontage, then save some of it. The truth is, however, you certainly could come back, or one could come back with another subdivision of that portion, that portion that's been preserved and have a whole new subdivision. We do have a phased subdivision process already on our books, so if it's a phased subdivision, we get to weigh in on both. But not all subdivisions that are next to each other are phased. So it doesn't prohibit it forever from being developed, but it just says that a single subdivision, you got to preserve half of your road frontage and use the land behind you. By the way, if you have no land behind you, we have a provision to give you relief on that already on the books, and you certainly can ask us for it. Didn't need to put it in the regulation because it already exists. But if you do have the land behind you, this is to encourage you to use it.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Any other comments?
I think that depth will need to be changed if we're at a one and a half acre A1 lot, instead of a two and a half acre A1 lot.
Okay.
Isn't that what that five forty-five?
Yeah, that five forty-five came from a two and a half.
Correct.
What would be the right number?
If it's one sixty and one and a half acres, you know, give or take a couple of feet, I think it's four hundred.
Four, yeah.
Somebody, somebody.
Come on, you engineering grads, let's go.
It's, I think that's close.
So what's the number?
Four. Hundred eighty.
Four eight.
Four zero eight.
Okay.
Do we really want that unusual of a number, or can we accept one, no more, no more unusual than five forty-five?
Our surveyors and engineers in Dixon County, they are good at finding those right spaces, I have every confidence in them. Provided you can get them on the phone. Because they're so busy.
Any further comments to this?
Mr. Chandler, I move that we amend subdivision regulation two point, two dash one zero one point six, subdivisions abutting existing county roads or highways, to read, subdivisions in the agriculture A1 zone that abut an existing county road or highway for a distance of more than four hundred feet shall not subdivide more than fifty percent of the frontage along such existing county road or highway to a depth of not less than four hundred eight feet. The subdivided lots abutting existing county road or, existing, I'm sorry, the subdivided lots abutting an existing county road or highway must be contiguous to each other.
Okay, have a proper motion by R.J. Comer to amend this section two dash one oh one point six. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Harold Williams, any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Todd Barry.
Yes.
Robert Witherow.
Yes.
Darren Green.
No.
Mac Pilkington.
No.
Robert Qualls.
Yes.
David Brogdon.
Yes.
Harold Williams.
Yes.
Shane Chandler.
Yes.
Gary Peeler.
No.
Christie Sullivan.
No.
Beth Garrett.
No.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move into item number three, revise section of four dash one oh three point one one one, subdivision public road access requirements.
We're getting there. This one is, we, we saw four dash one zero three dash one eleven twice tonight. And this is a provision that my colleagues, some of you remember when it was created. And it has been a thorn in our side on a number of subdivisions. This is the situation where you've got a subdivision on a front, on a road that is below our current standard, and then there's all these provisions to allow that subdivision to proceed anyway. And what we're trying to do is encourage subdivisions on str- on streets that are up to standard. So what we're doing here is, instead of saying that you can, that, that you have to have two deficiencies before we can say you can't subdivide that land, we've just changed it to one. The deficiencies are all the same, with the exception of, we've now updated the road width from eighteen feet to twenty feet. Twenty feet is our current county standard, by the way, not eighteen, so we've just changed that. And we simply said that now, if you have any of these deficiencies, then that's a sufficient deficiency that you can't subdivide it. But we added back subdivision four that says, in the absolute discretion of the planning commission, we can grant relief if you can get access to another outlet. So if you have a deficiency and, and you can't get access to another outlet, one deficiency and you're done. Right now, it's two deficiencies and you're done. But even if that one deficiency is there, if you have another outlet somewhere, we have the absolute discretion to grant it to you. We don't have to grant it to you, you're going to have to convince us why, but we can do it. The idea here is to protect substandard roads from the infrastructure stress, stress of new development without improving the road.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Anybody else have any comments to this section?
Well, part of this is just simply correcting, this is getting up to speed with what's already required anyway, so I don't see a whole lot of change in this, except giving us a little bit of discretion to, to, to allow more and permit it, so I, I don't see any problem with it.
Okay. If no further discussion, would somebody move forth a motion?
I'll so move.
Okay, we have a motion to revise section four dash one oh three point one 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 subdivision public road access requirements, and that is to make one deficiency. Okay. And then I, that's proper motion by David Brogdon and second by R.J. Comer. Any further discussion in this matter? Question, man, call, we'll give a roll call vote.
Todd Barry.
Yes.
Robert Witherow.
Yes.
Darren Green.
Yes.
Mac Pilkington.
Yes.
Robert Qualls.
Yes.
David Brogdon.
Yes.
Harold Williams.
Yes.
Shane Chandler.
Yes.
Gary Peeler.
Yes.
Christie Sullivan.
Yes.
Beth Garrett.
Yes.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item number four, is add letter item O to section one dash one oh four policies and purposes.
This provision was created by the subcommittee to address what is really kind of an anomaly in Tennessee law. Tennessee law says that a planning discretion, the planning commission's discretion is limited to exactly what it is allowed to exercise within their own code. Now, most jurisdictions, there's an implied amount of discretion to any administrative body. They have an implied amount of discretion within the scope and authority of their empowering statute, not in Tennessee. So our subdivision regulations already have a list of policies and goals for this county, and we're expected to try to make decisions consistent with them, but what our subdivision regulation doesn't say is that we can take those policy and goals into account in making subdivision decisions. And it has to say that so for, for us to be able to do it. So this provision adds section O in order to specify what I think we have the implied power to do now, and that is to take into consideration the goals and policies of our subdivision regulation, which are already written, and simply apply them to our decisions. However, in order to avoid an arbitrary exercise of that discretion, the provision also requires that the commission make very clear findings in the record as to what facts are at play when a commissioner or a group of commissioners determines that a project is or is not consistent with those goals. And that key, that prevents any group of commissioners or one commissioner from simply saying, well, in my opinion, you know, it just doesn't fit the goal. That would not meet the requirement. They have to put the facts in the record to support the decision. That's only fair to the public, it's fair to the applicant, and it's, and so that's in there. That's why it's there, I think it's an easy one, you know, let's, you know, let's take into consider the goals and policies that we already have in making our decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Any further comments to this section? If not, can I entertain someone to make a motion?
As it is a new regulation, I do have to read the whole thing. I move that we amend subdivision regulation one dash one zero four policy and purposes to add subsection O to read as follows. The planning commission shall have the authority and discretion to consider whether a proposed subdivision or any other action or decision of the planning commission contemplated in these regulations is consistent with the policies and purposes set forth herein, and may cite any of these policies and purposes as a basis to approve, conditionally approve, or deny a proposed subdivision or any other action or decision of the planning commission contemplated in these regulations. In taking any such action, the planning commission shall clearly state in the record of proceedings all facts supporting the planning commission's action.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Gary Peeler. No further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote on this.
Todd Barry.
Yes.
Robert Witherow.
Yes.
Darren Green.
Yes.
Mac Pilkington.
Yes.
Robert Qualls.
Yes.
David Brogdon.
Yes.
Harold Williams.
Yes.
Shane Chandler.
Yes.
Gary Peeler.
Yes.
Christie Sullivan.
Yes.
Beth Garrett.
Yes.
Robert Comer.
Yes.
Chairman, the motion carries.
Thanks, sir, we'll move into item number five, revise and amend section four dash one one one, preservation of natural features and amenities.
This is the last one, but it's the longest. We discussed it at our working session, and for the benefit of the members that weren't at the working session, what goes, we have a current provision in our code, four dash one eleven, which talks about the preservation of natural features and amenities. It doesn't just define those natural features at all, it doesn't define the amenities at all. It basically leaves it up to us to bring them up at the time that somebody brings us a preliminary map. Now, I know a lot of you guys that bring us preliminary maps, I've been seeing you come here for a while, I've come out and met you at, at the sites. And I know that if you were to bring a map to this body, and I were the, that very first night, you'd come to a, bring a map to this body, and you want an approval, you're expecting an approval tonight, and I say, yeah, David, I want to talk to you about some trees on your site, and I want to talk to you about some limestone outcroppings, and I think that barn might be a hundred and fifty years old. Why do you hold on to your map, and, you know, let's, let's get to, let's get to ground on these resources? I suspect my friend David would be a little upset with me, and rightfully so. So this provision does a couple of things. It identifies the natural features that we care about, and it simply requires that you put them on your map. It does not require a tree survey. It simply requires that when you bring your map to us, that anything we've identified as a natural feature or an irreplaceable asset, which is identified in the, in the provisions, and we can talk about what they are, you just got to put them on your map. That gives you notice, we might ask you about it. It gives us the opportunity to know what's on the site and talk to you about it. What are, what are we talking about, though, in terms of natural resources, natural features? Well, natural features are, of course, stands of forests, especially native forests. And it expressly exempts any exotic, any exotic or non-native species that's on the Tennessee invasive exotic plant list published by the Tennessee invasive plant council, and there's a website for that. So if you've got, you've got pear trees on your site, we're not going to ask you to protect them or preserve them. And I know some people like pear trees, but us, us, you know, us native forest restore, restorer people, we don't. So it's got to be a native stand for you to even have to put it on the map. Again, all you have to do is put it on the map. Lakes and ponds, vernal lakes and ponds have to be put on the map, streams and watercourses and waterfalls have to be put on the map. You tend to put those on the map now anyway. And limestone outcroppings or projections or ledges need to be on the map. Irreplaceable assets are primarily historic assets. Anything that's been there a long time, or that is listed, a long time is a hundred years, or is listed as a historic resource, we want to know it's there. So this is really a mapping requirement to make it clear what our provisions could already let us do to you, which we don't do to you because we know it's unfair. So this is a mapping requirement. The drafters of our provisions cared about irreplaceable assets, cared about natural features, we care about them. We just want to know that they're there, and then we can have a discussion about it.
Any further discussion?
Just to, to add to Mr. Comer's, in discussing this, the last vote we had helped us to solve some of the problem that we had that we could just arbitrarily just say, this is not something that fits our, so we corrected some of that. This is the rest of this, this basically helps us identify these natural areas. We're not saying you're prohibited to do it. I think some of the colleagues that, in the real estate business told, well, we, the, the builder developer wants to keep the trees, it makes the area more aesthetic. It, you can sell a place with a mature tree better than you can sell a place with a, and where you can keep them, the developers want to keep them, we understand that. We just want to see them on the map. And we have no control when Dixon Electric decides to put the power line in and just cut them all down anyway. So, so this, all this does is map it, and that's just help you, and it, it basically fits in with what we just did, it's protection more for the developer, and all lets us see it.
Thank you, Mr. Brogdon. Any further discussion?
Then, I haven't made the motion yet, let me make the motion for, for the record. Mr. Chair, I move that we amend subdivision regulation four dash one one one, I'm not going to read the whole thing, as shown in the distributed draft revised ten twenty twenty-one, distributed to the commission this date.
Have a proper motion to revise and amend item number five. Motion by. Have a proper motion to revise and amend item number five, motion by R.J. Comer. Was that a second, Mr. Brogdon?
It will be.
Yep, second by David Brogdon. Any further discussion in this matter? If not, we'll do a roll call vote.
Todd Barry?
Yes.
Robert Witherow?
Yes.
Darren Green?
No.
Mac Pelkington?
No.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan?
No.
Beth Garrett?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion carries.
Thank you. We're now moving to item number six, revise and amend section five point one oh two point two.
There is one more.
Yeah.
This is just making sure that five dash one oh two point two is, is harmonized with what we just did at four dash one eleven. They relate to each other, they have to kind of read the same way.
Anyone else have discussion on this item?
That sounds like a motion, I believe.
I move that we amend five dash one zero two point two, the features of our preliminary plat, subsection five, to be consistent with the draft distributed revised ten twenty twenty one as distributed to the commission.
Have a proper motion to revise and amend item number six by R.J. Comer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by David Brogdon. No further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote.
Todd Barry?
Yes.
Robert Witherow?
Yes.
Darren Green?
No.
Mac Pelkington?
No.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan?
No.
Beth Garrett?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Chairman, the motion carries.
Thanks, sir. We'll move into item number seven, and the final item is add new subsection four dash one oh two point one oh four lots subject to infrastrate gas transmission lines. This will also include additions to ART five, sections five dash one oh two point two, five one oh three point two, and five one oh four point two.
Right, now, this is something that the state actually passed the first of July of this year. I believe Mr. Collins had told us about it, so this is something that's going to be required on both preliminary and final plats, if you're within six hundred foot of a transmission gas line.
Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, there's something we really don't have any discretion on. It's going to come about, so we might as well amend our paperwork to comply with it because if we're not in compliance with it, it just makes us look bad and it doesn't change anything.
You are correct, sir. Is that a motion?
It can be, Mr. Chairman. I, well, I, I'll tell you what, it's that string that we need to read. But, Mr. Darnell, would you repeat the, the short title of this act?
Yeah, this is, this is, add the new to subsection four dash one oh two point one oh four lots subject to interstate gas transmission lines. This will include sections of Article Five, sections five dash one oh two point two, five dash one oh three point two, and five dash one oh four point two. That's something already passed by the state that is a requirement now.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Yes, you do.
By, I forgot your name, sorry.
Robert Qualls.
Robert. Robert Qualls. To add item number seven to our regs. Have a second by?
Todd Barry.
Todd Barry. It is, yes, thank you. Any further discussion in this matter?
And this has nothing to do with the fuel depot. This has to do with, with the big gas lines that cross, you know, everywhere. Natural gas lines, not leaking fuels.
Right.
Yeah, this was already approved by the state, you said, on January first of this year, it took effect.
So with a proper motion by Robert Qualls and a proper second by Todd Barry, no further discussion, can we get a roll call vote?
Todd Barry?
Yes.
Robert Witherow?
Yes.
Darren Green?
Yes.
Mac Pelkington?
Yes.
Robert Qualls?
Yes.
David Brogdon?
Yes.
Harold Williams?
Yes.
Shane Chandler?
Yes.
Gary Peeler?
Yes.
Christie Sullivan?
Yes.
Beth Garrett?
Yes.
Robert Comer?
Yes.
Chairman, the motion carries.
Thanks, sir. And before we adjourn, does anybody else have anything? And I just want to say, it's been a pleasure working with Mr. Harold Williams. He has been a good mentor to me. He served as chairman for a long while, and I certainly appreciate everything he has done for Dixon County planning.
Amen.
It's been, it's been my pleasure.
Anybody else have anything? Yes, Mr. Witherow?
Mr. Chairman, if, if we could, I'd just like for everyone to remember Ms. Shepherd family.